Well, good evening. Welcome to the May meeting of the Board of Education of the Lake Mills Area School District. My name is Bob DiNperio. I'll be presiding over the meeting this evening in the absence of Dr. Mason. As some of you may know, Dr. Mason's daughter Molly passed away last Thursday and our thoughts are with Rick and his entire family. So if we could stand, please, and have the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If we could have roll call, please.
Here.
Here.
Here. Verification of the meeting notice. I actually saw it in the leader, so I'm sure that it was noticed properly.
Yep, I saw it on the website, too.
The agenda, are there any revisions? If not, I would entertain a motion for their approval.
I move to approve the minute, the minutes?
No, the agenda.
The agenda. Okay, I move to approve the agenda as printed.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? The agenda is approved as printed. Community input, is there anyone that wishes to speak? You could identify yourself.
I'm Brenda Morris with Lake Mills Education Association. I'm sorry with Dean not here, I didn't get registered like I was supposed to. But the Lake Mills Education Association and the Lake Mills Education Support Professionals Association did want to express our thanks to our business manager, Andrew Deeb, for the upcoming informational meetings on the insurance. And we also appreciate the administration's dedication to finishing the changes to OPEB and also the new salary schedule. We're looking forward to the completion of this process and moving forward with new salaries and benefits. We also wanted to offer congratulations and our welcome to Cale Vogel and his new position as the high school principal. We look forward to working with Cale in the new school year. And then although Dean is not here, we did also want to express thanks to him for all of his hard work with staff and students over the years, and we'll come back and tell him again in June. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the board? Okay. One of the things I forgot to note was that Mr. Sanders, Ms. Strike, and Mr. Sheal are all absent this evening as they are participating in the Capital Conference Academic Awards, which is going on as we speak. So, they will be missed, but we'll carry on as best we can. The next item is on the consent agenda, approval of the minutes for the past, for meetings during April. Can I have a motion to that effect, please?
I move to approve the minutes of the April 11th, 2016 regular meeting, April 18th, 2016 special meeting, April 20th, 2016 special and executive session meeting, February 17th, 2016 special and executive session meeting, and the April 25th, 2016 special and executive session meeting.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, signified by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item is the vouchers and invoices. Those were included in the packet.
There's something missing. A dollar amount, I think. See right here.
That's the last page.
Okay, it's 749.
Mm-hmm. Do we have a total?
Yeah, it's on the last page.
It's on the last page.
It's 749.
Yep. So I'll make the motion. I move to approve the vouchers and invoices in the amount of $749,279.14 for the month of April 2016 and the treasurer's report from April 2016.
Second.
Move by Ms. Davies, seconded by Dr. Delaney. Any questions? Hearing none, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Now we have the administrative reports. Ms. Thompson?
Good evening. I'm losing my voice, so I apologize ahead of time. I just have two updates for you. At your table spots, I have the student handbook for next school year for your first read. You'll notice our new Lake Mills Elementary School logo on the front cover. Last year, we did a pretty big revamp to the entire student handbook and the format. This year, the only thing that we've changed is on page four, under Character and Community, we added some more information about our PBIS, which is Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports. Seconds, PBIS, our Responsive Classroom Work, and then Check-In/Check-Out. So, a lot of the pillars of what we do for character development have been added on page four. If you have any questions as you review it, please feel free to give me a call or email. And then I just wanted to give you an update on our communications work with David Voss. The webpage is in progress for the redesign. Krasznik has been working with CMS First Schools on getting the information ready to be transferred over to the new site so that that will all be done by August 1st of this school year. Payam Strike is working with David on the district logo. That's something that's been in process, and we're going to regroup and pull together some more people to get some more feedback around what that district logo is going to look like. Payam is also working with him on quality print pieces. These would be information that we'd have at the district office, at the buildings, and then also things for realtors and other community service providers to be able to have on hand to talk about our school. So those are the things that are in the works at the moment. And in June, we have a training set up with David to work with some of our key stakeholders in communications. Part of it is going to be leveraging our tools, so he's going to teach us and train us how to leverage all the new tools that we have. And then the other half of the day is going to be about our Communications Crisis Response Plan. Any questions?
Could you tell me what PBIS stood for again?
Sure. Positive Behavior Intervention Supports.
Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you very much.
Right, thank you.
Ms. Nicholson?
I also have our handbook for you to review. I would like to go over a couple of sections in here. Everything that we've changed for this year is highlighted, except one change of wording, which I didn't highlight. So you can certainly review the highlighted sections, but there's just three or four that I'd like to cover with you tonight. Let me find my place. We're going to start pretty late in the handbook, so on page nine, just to let everybody know that we have not been requiring students to buy PE T-shirts anymore, so that's been phased out, so I took that out. We do not send hard copies unless they're requested of progress reports. That is all done via Family Access. On page two, because of the technology and the way the kids are organizing themselves, we don't, we no longer require an assignment notebook. And then the last change is that we are going to start inviting five 5th graders to all of our activity nights next year, instead of just the last one during the year. So that was a change on the very last page. Any questions regarding that?
Page two, we no longer can enroll students at the schools.
I had my secretary's look over this, and so Danelle changed that. I assumed that they had been in conversation with Roseanne about, but I can double check on that.
Well, I guess that's the question. People can't enroll their kid at the school anymore? They have to go to the district office to do it?
Right, I will check on that. Do you guys know off the top of your head how that?
Can they still enroll at your school?
Because I think it was causing quite an issue with the different schools, the materials all being checked in differently. Does that make sense? So, we wouldn't have, like, we wouldn't get a birth certificate here, or, I mean, see that there, or we would get the wrong age, or not have the schools. So we wanted one person to manage it. But I can double check on that for you.
Yeah, most schools, they can go to their school and enroll, you know?
And I think right now, correct me if I'm wrong.
The local district office, what?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but if you have three students in a school.
You have to go.
All three schools. So let me check to see if you can still either do all three at the district office, or if, and, go to the schools. I'm not sure if that's a choice.
Yeah, and then also, we have the option of online, if there's, you know, the process can be started, yeah.
Yeah, this is for new student registration.
Not just registration, but in, you know, are we talking about the same thing?
Two different things. This is new student registration, enrollment.
Enrollment would be handled, and then registration would be handled.
So they have to go two places.
But if it could be started online, like, for example, like, for example, we moved from Maryland, and so I had to get my mom to go to the office and fill out the paperwork for me because there was no way, you know what I mean? So if you're out of state or you're moving from a different place, if you could start the process online.
So you can do that now?
No, no. Yeah, no. But it would be an idea.
Well, maybe when the new website comes up in August. It'll be on there.
There you go. And that's your list. All right. Other than that, I don't have anything to report, except for wonderful, we're kind of in the middle of our music concerts, so I want to thank Mr. Klats and Ms. Schmidt for all of the work that they did last week on the concert, and I look forward to this week's choir concert. Any questions for me?
Thank you very much. Ms. Seaverood?
Good evening. Just a report on our forward exam testing. We're almost done with it. We have about 100 kids, Jen said, that need to finish their makeup testing, but otherwise our scheduled testing is done with that. So that will all be done by May 20th. They just sent out the schedule for next year, it's looking the same, except for they're moving it up a little bit, so it's done by May 5th. Didn't really read why, but moving it up. Working on a lot of different projects through our PLCs, working on inclusive practices and co-teaching, making sure that we, as a district, are using best practices in special education delivery, and making sure that we're using it as a service and not a location, which is what the government really is pushing for us to do. We're also working with our autism grants. We're hoping that that renews for the next year, but we've gotten a lot of professional development this year, which is the point of the grant, on best practices for autism, and we've tried to include parents. So if there are any other parents of students with autism out there who would like to join that PLC if we get the grant next year, please let me know. If you hear people or want to know, it's a monthly commitment for about an hour a month for a meeting. And then we're also starting a Transition Program Committee, which, really working on our students who are 18 to 21-year-olds with intellectual disabilities, and what their programming is going to look like. We have a large group of students coming up, not this next year, but the year after, who would be a 5th-year senior. They're allowed to stay in school, expected, actually, to stay in school till their 21st year, through their 21st year. And we don't, we haven't had a lot of students in that age range with that disability, so now we're starting to look at what should that look like in a year, and how do we want to design it? It's typically done outside of the high school. It's usually done more community-based, but it still has an academic component, especially, they call them functional academics, but it really focuses on money management skills and those kinds of, types of things. Also, daily living skills, how do you keep your house clean? How do you make your bed? How do you cook? Those types of things. Really working on increasing independence for our kids. And then, of course, vocational skills is the other aspect. So we'll be looking for community members who will help us with our, expanding our students' vocational skills out in the community, which we've started a little bit of here, in the high school level, which is pretty typical, but we want to really expand it, so they're almost working like a full eight hours by the time they're 21. Any questions?
How did the forward exam go? I know last year it wasn't so great.
I think it was better than last year. I sat in one room while they did it, and kids were logging in about 20 times. It would not let them log in, and I don't know if that was a connection part on our part or on the exam part, where it just was not making the click, and every once in a while it would kick kids off. But from what I could tell, much smoother than the Badger exam last year. So we'll see.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Mr. Deeb?
Yes, good evening. Couple of things, as I said, we didn't get an opportunity to have our finance committee meeting on Friday. We're going to be rescheduling it this week, hopefully, when I, if I get things out. There's a lot going on this week with, obviously, the board meeting tonight, and then our health meetings are starting, informational meetings over the next week and a half here to hopefully touch base with all of our employees to see where we're at with our health increases and things like that. We're also looking at, with WA member benefits, through talking with them, was able to add a couple of enhancements at no cost to the district. That's going to be good for our employees. Addition of a post-tax Roth 403B, which we haven't had before, it's always been pre-tax. The reason for the 403B post-tax, a lot of the younger teachers who are maybe single have more access to their money, it's easier for them. If they would have a need, they can pull money out easier than the typical 403B that's pre-tax, so. And that's kind of been a trend that they've been looking for, I know. So, we just have that as an option now, along with the other ones. We've also added a hardship addition to the TSA plans, and basically what that is, it's just a last-case resort that somebody can apply for. Not, we don't make the determining factor on it, the provider will make the determining factor on it, we just provide the information why they're looking for a hardship loan out of their TSA, so. And there's no cost to it as well. There's also, we added in the plan with them, one free financial planning consultation per employee, per out one hour. So I know that's something people have been asking for, and actually, we've always had that, but they've never really communicated that, I would say. So it's going to be very good for them to have that, I think, and be able to sit down with somebody at no cost to them, so. We're also going to be looking at tonight, and I think it's on the, I believe it is on the agenda, to look at doing pay periods differently this next year, that teachers have been wanting and asking for, to choose either 26 or 22 pay periods for all staff, not just teachers or individual, different groups, it's all employees across the board. So, more on that to be coming, probably this next meeting, so. You'll also see fees are going to be up as well. There's going to be no increases on any fees, other than our lunch ones that we discussed And then, as I mentioned, our health meetings, the first one's tomorrow night from 6:00 to 8:00, which is a larger group, hopefully, they were going to get, so we can invite all the significant others of our, of our teachers and hourly people. Other than that, that's going to be hosted by Houseman Johnson and Dean Health, so hopefully that's some good information, and we'll also have our input as well. We've got a couple of slides, we're going to put in real-life scenarios of some teachers in the district and the questions they've had, so hopefully it'll be more than just your presenting, so we'll be able to give them some. And I have a lot of time allotted for that. I don't think we'll use the two hours that we had, but if we do, so be it. So, I want everyone to be really be understanding of our, of our benefits after these meetings, so. Any questions on those?
I have a question on the health.
Yeah.
Last meeting you told us the 6% increase.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, who's going to pay that 6%? We, we are, or our employees are?
Employees, if they stay on the traditional plan. Increase is all on the traditional plan.
Okay, yeah, that's, I remember that. And then, the other thing you mentioned, the lunch program. Last year, we started a new lunch program. Are we having a yearly evaluation now? We've had it for one year.
Yes.
Who's evaluating it, and will we get a report?
Yep, we're going to be sitting down with, before the next, before the June meeting, since that's the last one of the fiscal year, sitting down with Kathy Coyman and hopefully her area manager for Avians, and seeing where we're at, what their thoughts are on it, and obviously, seeing where we're at with a break-even, making money or breaking even, for sure. And I can already tell you we are, in that case, so. I ain't prepared, I'm not prepared to tell you how much we're making above breaking even, but we are breaking even, so.
Will we do anything, a little monkey survey or something with parents, or?
Sure, I'm sure we can do something like that, yeah, definitely.
We need to. And teachers.
Yeah. Simple survey monkey?
Sure, certainly.
Not just teachers, but staff.
I'm okay with whatever, but I think the users should.
Stakeholders.
Mm-hmm.
Certainly. Okay.
And for the reporting, I think, I think it would be interesting to kind of see, and maybe it's just a finance committee thing, but numbers, like maybe quarterly or semestral, kind of where we are with things. Are we seeing a decline? Are we seeing an increase?
Certainly.
Are there certain things, you know, we can kind of correlate to? You know, and if they have any data to look at, you know, menu or time of year, you know what I mean?
Mm-hmm.
And kind of see, kind of see what that looks like.
Certainly.
And maybe, you know, elementary school, what does that look like, middle school? You know, how are they? Because the offerings are different at each of the schools, so.
I think we can talk to Kathy and come up with, talk to you guys in the next meeting here, and see what things you're looking for, and see if they can provide those. I'm sure we'll be able to.
I think that would be helpful for them, too, to look at.
Wasn't there a little committee that picked this lunch program? Maybe they could help with the survey questions that you want to ask? I mean, I wasn't, you were at those meetings, so you kind of know what you were expecting.
So, Andrew, was your report going to include a discussion on staffing?
Well, I have the, brought forward the proposal for the new staff member who are adding to the district office, and I know that's coming up later on to, I'm wishing to approve, but if you want to review those, that's who we picked for the, to bring forward to the board. And I just kind of presented it to you, I don't know if you want to say anything about this individual, or what are you looking?
No, I thought, I thought in the.
I didn't get that either.
You didn't get one of them? Okay, you passed it down. Okay, are you pertaining then to?
Future staffing needs? There was, we have, we have some material in our packet that, that speaks to that. Was that going to be included in your, in your report as well?
I don't think so. I think that was in mind, no.
What's a staffing here and salary increases?
Right here.
It had to do with the number of staff from the elementary school and the middle school.
Other than the fact, I know that there's movement, you know, different staffing with teachers moving up from elementary to middle school, and then additional staff being hired for the middle school, because of that normal bubble going from middle, from elementary school to middle school. And the principals might be able to talk more on that, if they had a question directly on that, but.
Well, they mentioned three at the middle school, and I guess I was wondering what the three positions would be and why three are needed?
Perhaps Ms. Nicholson could clarify.
I have some questions, too.
Yeah, she definitely can.
Thank you.
And I guess space.
Yeah, I have a big question about that.
So, our conversations about space, just to start there, have been very preliminary because we have no idea what we are going to have for staff. Some of the preliminary discussions do include taking away both of the labs, moving one of the labs into the LMC, and, but everybody is one-to-one, so that's part of the discussion in terms of actual staffing.
Computer lab? I'm sorry?
Yep, the two computer labs. So there's a lower computer lab and an upper computer lab. The lower computer lab was due for replacement. We requested from the Technology Committee that we get one-to-one devices for 5th grade instead, a higher-quality device that everybody was on the same page with. And then, there wasn't really much use for that lab if everybody was one-to-one, 5th and 6th grade. 5th grade will not be taking their devices home. In the upper lab, we would, we felt that there was space to have at least 28 computers in the LMC, so that you could still have the use of a full lab if you needed it for a classroom space. That would be accessible for 5th through 8th grade, and then that room would also become a classroom. And then, when you balance that all out, there's still one staff member who will, may need to be, like, going to the gaps where the gaps are in terms of prep or whatever. So, like, we might have an English Language Arts teacher that might start out teaching 6th grade in the 6th grade wing in the 6th grade classroom, and move to the, I don't know for sure, because I wasn't sure about what the staffing would be, so I haven't gotten into the nitty-gritty.
What was listed here, is that what you really need? What they said, or is this just stuff you're investigating? I mean.
Or the staffing needs?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It talks about moving a teacher from the elementary.
Yep.
Then it talks about three new positions, so now we're to four. It talks about increasing someone from a .5 to a full-time, so that's another half. And if you just go back to those four full-time, the three new and the one that you're moving from the elementary to the middle school, you need either four extra classrooms, or that's 20, 20 to 24 extra sections every day. So my question was, do we have that many rooms available at the middle school?
And some of them.
Or do we have more empty classrooms? Do we have to, now you're talking about moving computers, does this involve a remodeling, a minor remodeling?
And I haven't gotten to, I haven't talked to the tech director about moving the lab into the library fully. There's 13 computers in there now, so we'd have to move 15 computers, and I'm not sure quite what that would look like. And I'm sorry, I don't have answers to those questions. We do have a lot of rooms, like our French room is used the first two periods of the day. And our Spanish room, then she meets on day one, day two. Spanish is only over there one of the two days. So then we take both foreign languages and we put them into one room, and then we have that room extra. So it will truly be what it was designed to be, 7th grade in the 7th grade wing, 8th grade in the 8th grade wing. We're moving from four sections in 8th grade to five. Five sections in 7th grade is, is going to stay five, but 5th grade moved from four sections to five sections. It grew in between 5th and 6th grade, so it was four sections moving in, it'll need to be five next year. And then, 5th grade, which was four, is now six sections next year. So there are a lot of extra sections.
Yeah, there are.
Yeah.
And every section's got to have a place to go.
Yeah, yeah, and it was designed nicely to have science, social studies, math, and language arts all in one wing, and that's, we'll have dedicated teams for the first time since I've known, where it's been not, not sharing between half-sixths and partial-sevenths. So, that's where the staffing is coming in, is all those new sections. And like Dean said, I think he did a really nice job explaining it in the board packet, but he doesn't anticipate this necessarily being forever. You know, he said it could be, he anticipates, kind of like what's going on with elementary school in three or four years, that these positions will, may dissolve.
Or may move out to the high school.
Or may move up to the high school.
Yeah, they're just matriculating through the system. Do you think, when you get your plan in place, that you'll be talking at all with the Facilities Committee? If facilities are involved, where you're changing kind of the footprint of the original building?
I don't see us moving any walls or anything like that right now. I don't see the lab becoming contained within the LMC. I see it as another section where there's some extra tables, that the computers would kind of do a U-shape there.
Okay.
But I can certainly bring those plans to you. And I, if the staffing positions are approved, my schedule is, like, ready to go for you, and I can bring that to the next board meeting, where you can see all, where all those staff would be exactly placed.
So we would expect, then, at the June meeting, we would have a specific proposal to increase staffing?
I would hope that would be tonight. I would hope that Dean had put enough details in there. I don't, if you need other things, there is.
We'd be looking for consensus this evening, then, to let the administration move forward to fill the positions as described in the handout.
Well, yeah, first we got to find out where they're going to put all these people, but you don't know that yet.
I have my schedule, I could draw it out, draw it out for you right now, if you wanted me to, real quickly. I have a very solid idea.
I thought they'd come in a regular proposal.
Right, well, it sounds like she has three spaces that, so.
At least three spaces, and then where.
One more, and then we.
Yeah.
Okay, because three, we're talking about four additional teachers.
Right.
Full-time teachers, plus that one you're going up from a half to a full.
So there might be one that needs to share.
There might be one that needs to share, and may need to share by grade level, might be the best scenario. So that was the only one I do not have solidified, is that fourth teacher, and whether or not they would be in the 6th grade classroom when that teacher's on prep, they would be teaching 6th grade classes. Does that make sense?
I guess the only reason I'm asking these questions is, I'm most, we, in our other middle school, everything was fine until we started changing the footprint, started to put walls up here, and walls up there, and all that, and the ventilation system wasn't[1754.94] wasn't the same and everything, so...
Yeah.
I think when it, if it gets to that point, you need to get people involved to know the footprint, and these, what these changes do to a building.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't anticipate that with, with these staffing proposals.
So, is the eighth grade class actually growing by about 40 students? So, this is here from 89 students, 2015 to 126 anticipated for next year?
Because it goes crosswise, it's the next grade.
Yeah, so that's our seventh grade class this year, is that number?
You're anticipating no staffing needs at the elementary, no more at the high school?
Correct.
None, no more at the district office?
No.
Because, you know, when you start adding, I, I say that we don't have any money troubles, but when you start adding this number of staff people, and then we found out that we might be, have requests for two additional, for two assistant principals, all of a sudden you're up to a half a million dollars, and when you didn't have any money, I mean, when you didn't have any money troubles, you can start having them quick, when you start adding a lot of personnel.
Well, we did work within the budget, so...
And that doesn't go away.
We did look at that, we did look at that with next year's budget, so...
The cost?
Yes, we did.
And did you include those, that, the possibility of two assistant principals?
No, we did not in that.
And more staff at the district office? No.
Yes, that was included, yes. That was. Everything that's in this here is, yes.
The budget?
Yes.
So, they've reworked a few things?
Yeah. We looked at the scenarios for increases and everything, so that's what we've been working on, so...
That's good, because, okay. You think you have a lot of money to start adding personnel?
That is true, but...
So, are we in agreement that we should begin the search for additional staff members?
I think that comes later as an agenda item?
Yeah, it comes under approval.
Or a general item?
Agenda item, yeah.
Okay.
But if you don't have any other questions for me?
Good. I don't want to get ahead of myself, sorry.
That's all right. We're moving along pretty fast, so you need to...
You'll have to, are you the one talking about the lead pipes, Bob?
Just, that appears to be a little later in the agenda.
It's in administrative report?
So...
The only other thing I had, it's right in mind, is that I would like the board to seriously take a look at the increases for next year for everyone but the teachers to be completed next month, so we don't get in a retro pay situation again like this last year, which can cause a lot of administrative nightmares, so hopefully...
What do you mean, but the teachers?
Well, the teachers just need to be approved by the start of their payroll cycle, which doesn't start till September, so, whereas everyone else starts in July, so it'd be nice to have their, and we'll bring that forward this next meeting, and what we're looking at, so...
Has that been discussed with the finance committee?
That was supposed to be Friday, but we haven't had chances since we knew.
So, there will be that discussion?
Yes, yeah. I, I know that what we're looking at is around a 1.5% increase for the, that part of the staff, and then, that's above what everyone else in the area is pretty much offering at this time, from the research that we've done, so I feel that's, we've done scenarios based on one, one and a half, two, just to do it money-wise with the cost of district, and we've looked at all that, so...
Will this then ripple into, to the new salary plan? This is the increase? And will it be based, this is the staff, salary increase you're proposing?
Everyone, yeah, everyone but the certified staff.
And, oh, because the certified staff will be governed by the new salary schedule?
Correct.
Right, and we don't have to, their cycle starts in September?
Yes.
So, we have some time.
Where's the other one? Start July, so we need to, that's where, like I said, you had this before, before I was here, it happened we had retro pay and things like that other years, so I think it's fair for the staff, you know, to have to wait for that, and so... That's it.
Agreed.
Okay, well, that concludes the administrative reports. Now for the board reports. Again, Mr. Sheal is not here. The salary committee, Dr. Delaney?
I was not able to attend the last meeting, but my understanding is more progress was made. We have an upcoming meeting, which hopefully on May 24th will also be the final meeting? Hopefully. Bob, you were there, maybe you can fill us in on what...
Right, well, we've been meeting with a group of staff, as well as our consultant, Bob Butler, and Bob has been most helpful, especially given the, the wide background that he has had working with other districts. And the draft that we're working on now has a, a number of levels for, for the staff, and progression through those levels, we're looking at both professional development, as well as educator effectiveness ratings as ways to proceed through the levels. At this point, we've talked about moving people onto the new schedule at their current salary, so that no one would be, being reduced in salary, it would, it would slide across. Between now and our May 24th meeting, we're going to be getting the financial report as far as the sustainability of that plan, and it is certainly our hope to come back here in June with, with a plan, with a discussion about the affordability of it, and something that can be implemented, so again, we can avoid the retroactive pay, and that people have a good understanding of what, what they can expect, and we have some predictability. So, we're hoping that, hoping that we can do that in May. I'm pretty confident that we can. So, then the, the finance committee, Dr. Thomas?
We didn't have, we didn't meet either.
So, we'll meet this coming Friday?
Friday.
And we'll be able to report at the next meeting.
Next meeting.
Okay. Discussion on the East Lake Park Place reconstruction, as the city is going to be doing, the, the roadway, they're going to be uncovering all the water piping. There is a potential that there may be some lead lines, the laterals from the city main to one of our buildings, if not more. It's not, I think it's kind of unlikely, given the, given the age in which the district office was constructed. However, in the event that that, that they discover that, that would be the ideal time to replace the lateral, and the administration has asked for authority to act on that if, if that is the case. And so, I, that seems pretty reasonable, and yet, I, I, I think it's pretty unlikely that, that we're going to incur that.
Yeah.
So, if, if everyone is okay with that, the administration can proceed as the situation dictates.
We have to, don't you think?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I agree, I think it's unlikely, that the building is relatively now...
It is what it is.
So, okay, then we can move into the action items. The first item is contract for the high school principal. We have, have the paperwork on that previously, and so I would ask for a motion to approve the contract for Mr. Vogel.
I move the board approve a contract to Mr. Cale Vogel as the new high school principal with a start date of July 1st, 2016.
Second?
Moved and seconded. Open for discussion.
Did we get a summary of the contract at all?
No, there was an email sent.
There was?
Yeah. Yep, it's in an email. Just the, you know, bulleted.
The what?
It was, it was based on the, our normal contract, and then he, so he just made some main points there, but nothing out of the ordinary.
I'll look it up.
Any other questions? May we please have a roll call?
Aye.
Abstained.
Aye. Motion carries, three to zero with one abstention. The next item is the contract for the psychologist for grades five through 12. That information was in the packet?
And this is to, I'll ask questions, I guess, after I make the motion?
Okay, so we'll have a motion, then we can talk about it.
Okay. I move the board approve a contract to Ms., is it Kirsten?
Kirsten.
It is Kirsten, okay. Kirsten Gillespie as the new grades five through 12 psychologist for the 2016-17 school year.
Second?
Moved and seconded. Now we can ask questions and talk all about it.
Okay, and this is, this is the same position as Jessica Callaway, correct? Okay. Who is leaving the district?
This is what?
This, this is the position Jessica Callaway is leaving?
We're lucky we found somebody.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, may we please have a roll call vote?
Aye.
Oh, you can have it?
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the next item on the agenda is approval of a contract for payroll and benefits coordinator, and I think there was some information that was...
Yeah, I need a different one. Thank you. Did you get one? That one, benefits, payroll and benefits? Yep, that's that one.
Okay.
Okay, I'll, I'll sort of make the motion, and then we can talk about it. I, I move the board approve a full-time 12-month payroll and benefits contract to...
Rebecca Hayferman.
Rebecca Hayferman, for the 2016-17 school year.
Second?
Moved and seconded, to approve the contract to Rebecca Hayferman. Comments, questions?
Anything you care to share? We just got this.
Basically, I kind of wrote up the attributes you were looking for on the bottom of the, of the form there, but she's coming to us, she's going to be losing her position with Kraft Foods in Madison, and she's from locally here, from Lake Mills, her husband's a police officer, and it's just a good, a lot of experience, so I think we're going to gain varying degrees of HR and payroll, so...
Told you.
Very, very good candidate, very impressed with her, so...
I told you we had a bunch of people here in Lake Mills.
How does it tell anywhere? This went on to a new contract schedule. What was the rate of pay? It's a salary, it says, 12 months payroll and benefits contractor?
It's at the top.
In the back?
On the top here.
That's for the first year. This lady has a lot of...
She'll be pro-rated for the first month, she's starting in June, so...
This lady has a lot of experience.
Yes, lots of experience.
Well, that's fantastic.
Yeah, I think she'll be taking cash flow, so that'll help with her difference from probably what she was making in Madison versus here, so...
I would guess. You had quite a few applicants, too. 26 is good, nice.
Okay, are we good? May we please have a roll call vote?
Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Delaney?
Aye. The next item on the agenda are professional staff contracts for the 2016-17 school year. And in, in the packet, we're listing of those contracts, so if we could have a motion?
I move the board approve the professional staff contracts for the 2016-17 school year.
Second?
Moved and seconded. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Aye.
Aye. And then, we have letters of assignment for all non-professional staff and co-curriculars for the coming school year.
I move the board approve letters of assignment for all non-professional staff and co-curriculars for the 2016-17 school year.
Second?
Moved and seconded. Questions or comments? Hearing none, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Aye.
Rachel Davies? Aye.
Aye. And we have one letter of resignation.
I move the board approve the resignation of Ms. Cassandra Emel at the end of the 2015-16 school year. Oh, did you need to read, you read that afterwards, don't you?
Well, I do have a, well, I can't, I don't know, I can't remember if it was before or after, so...
I think it's after.
All right, we continue.
Go ahead. Usually, that's the way we do it, we, we bring the motion, and then we have the discussion, right?
Yes.
Yes. So, 2015-16 school year.
Second?
Okay, it says, "To the Lake Mills School District. I've enjoyed my time at Lake Mills School District. It has been an invaluable experience, and I'll never forget the people and the culture of this district. I appreciate all the support and accommodations for my military service. I was able to focus on my mission while deployed, and did not have to worry about having to find a new place of employment. My wife and I have had many discussions about our future and some of the challenges we encounter with me working so far away. A career opportunity significantly closer to my home has opened, and we have made the decision together to pursue that opportunity. I have accepted another position for next school year, and will not be seeking further employment by the Lake Mills School District for the 16-17 school year. I'm available at any time to complete any further paperwork required. Please contact me with any questions or concerns in order to continue being an asset to the school district. I'm available to assist you with interviewing process if desired. Thank you, Cassandra Emel."
Any questions? Hearing none, may we also have a roll call vote?
Aye.
Rachel Davies? Aye.
Delaney?
Aye. The next item on the agenda is approval of a co-curricular letter of assignment. Entertain a motion to that effect?
I move the board approve a contract to Mr. Matt Christian as a middle school track and field coach for the 2016-17 school year.
Second? It's 15-16 school year.
It's 15-16? 15-16.
Moved and seconded. Mr. Deve, do you have anything to add to this?
Nope.
Item?
Nope. Just a listing, so...
Any questions? May we have a roll call vote, please?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the next item on the agenda is discussion and action on post-retirement benefits. We have talked about this for, for a while. We had a meeting on April 18th with our consultant, Linda Mott, from Key Benefits, and recently we received the, the final draft, although I think that there's a number of questions that still, that we still have in concept. I don't think there's a question, but I think some of the details have some, some questions, and given that, I'm going to suggest that we raise those questions, but table this as an action item for tonight, and so perhaps we could, first, I'm not sure if we have to ask, discuss the questions first, or move to table it. I think once you move to table it, you can't talk about it anymore.
Okay, I can't, too?
Pardon?
Is there a discussion before you take the tabling vote?
Yeah, I think we should have a discussion.
I'll move to, I'll move first to table, table this till the June meeting, the O-K discussion. If somebody seconds it, then we can have discussion about it.
Oh, then we discuss it, and then we take a vote?
Yeah.
Okay, second?
Now we can...
Okay, so...
And I did have a couple, I think I finally answered a couple of your questions. If you want to go through them, I can address them. But the ones that we talked about, I think, I, I think some of it's just the wording, whether calling things TSAs and 403Bs, and they're really the same thing, and to clean that up, I think is the one main thing we've got to do.
Write that down, so we get a list.
I got it right here. And the other thing I figured out also from talking to you was the two different, whether they need to be listed separately, because some of it's up until now, their years of service, and then the rest is going forward, so really, it should be probably spelled a little clearer along those lines as well, so...
I don't know what that meant.
Well, if you look at, for instance, tier three, we were looking at, and it says here, TSA contributions, and then it says district 403B contributions. The top one is up to now, their years of experience, and the bottom was going forward until retirement. But it's not really worded all that well to understand it, I don't think, so I think that's one thing that we need to clean up on that, so...
So, the first contribution is based on service to date?
Yes.
And the second one is?
Going forward.
Going forward.
Yeah.
But it doesn't really say that all that well.
Yes.
Right.
Now we can have two options, can we have, still have two options for where people put their money? Before, we thought we could, but not, then you said, no, we could only have one, and now you say we can have two?
Well, that's the one clarifying thing that, when you hear back from Bob Butler regarding, the big determining factor is, we didn't have the verbiage in the past set up correctly in the handbook to be able to allow that, and now that change has been made, and it's also a pre-tax, FSA is what we're talking about, not holding money to pay for premiums, so that's, I'm going to get that clarified as well, I asked for that from her as well, so I think there's more to come on that, so, because I was done kind of, the wording of it, she didn't quite get the way I wanted it, so it would be easier for everyone to do that. So, 'cause that was done, kind of, the wording of it, she didn't quite get the way I wanted it, so it'd be easier for everyone to understand, so...
I think we should ask for that in writing, too, from Bob, because
Yeah.
we may all be going down the road and we don't want the district to end up in the same issue that we ended up in.
And unfortunately, in the meeting that I wasn't able to attend, you know, I, my interpretation of what was gonna happen was a little different than what came out of it, 'cause we were hoping that was gonna be more, whereas more lines over, we'd contribute to a TSA and there wouldn't be an option to hang on to the money, which is really no financial benefit to our retirees to hang on to their money at the district. It doesn't do any work for them, you know? And plus, if you're over 59 and a half, you can, you have access to that money anytime you like. So they could use that money out of their 403B or TSA to pay for their health if they wanted to. Instead of us hanging on to it, they're not earning anything, whereas if it was in a 403B, at least earning on that, or if they take this type and pay out, they could always have that and then you meet, you know, invest it anywhere they want as well, or invest it in the savings account or whichever, so... But when they have it with the district, it just doesn't, um, earn them any money. You know, it's just us hanging on to it, so...
So you're gonna ask about the 20% of the, for the three years and using it toward their health insurance and what the tax implications are for that?
Since it's a, since it's a, a pre-tax, there is no tax implications on that. There's no, it doesn't have to be claimed all upfront in the first year. Like, uh, it would have been if we didn't have the Section 125 in place.
Okay. And you did talk to us a little bit about how often you're gonna make the payments for the 20%. Did we, didn't we talk about that? Is it gonna be like it is, or once a year, or twice a year, or in 26 payments?
It's gonna be as pay period, yeah, and 26 pay period, yeah.
Did we talk about that, you guys, or did I just dream we did?
Because that's currently how it is now.
Yeah.
So, um, it helps, you know, with cash flow wise, that's probably the best, and it's having one lump sum come out. But, I mean, what's nice about, we have talked to several retirees, um, already, and overwhelmingly, I, all of them are deciding to go with a TSA, um, option. And that, that, because, versus keeping the money with the district, so...
What is keeping, is that an HRA? Is that what you're saying? What's keeping them?
Yeah, going with an, going with an HRA to pay for their, for their, um, their healthcare, so... This way, you know, that way we're gonna hang on to it, it can work for them, and TSA, and they can pull it out as needed. Um, I've also talked to them about paying, they can pay more often on their health insurance than just once a month. They can pay, you know, six months' worth, they can pay a year if they want to. And I know that, for instance, I've talked to, like, two of the retirees and they plan to do that, if not yearly, six, every six months. So, so they have to worry about coming in, sending a check to the district, or stopping in, or that type of thing, so... But I think, like I said, this is getting really close now. I think it's pretty real hashed out, except for the verbiage of it, I think needs to read a little easier, so...
Rachel, you asked about ages.
Um, I saw in most of my packets, they, they do say this. Um, I, I did have a confusion, because I know I saw something some, somewhere one time, but I think it was a typo and it got fixed. So the more recent paperwork I have in my bag has these ages. So my recollection, while I was sitting in a conference room, or a waiting room at the hospital today, was a little different than what, um, than the more recent paperwork I have. So my, my question has been answered. I think, I think the only question that came up when we were talking, though, was the, the difference in ages between the... Where that came from, I was, I apologize, I was not at the OPEB. I was at a doctor's appointment again. The last one, so the, the ages for the different groups, they're not, it's not all
Uniform?
The same, right. So is that, I'm, I'm assuming you all talked about that, and...
And it was, was my understanding that the, the primary group affected, the teachers currently, the current, um, language is age 55, and that's why that was retained. Where others were changed to 57 to correspond better with, um, the state W, you know, the WRS retirement, as well as, um, uh, the Medicare threshold.
Yeah, from my understanding, you wanted things not to change in tier one, and that's why I see the 55 there. But if you look in the other tiers, it is a 57 for the teachers, so it really was just that, you know, you want tier one to stay how it is now.
It's effectively the grandfathering
Yes.
of current, um, staff members.
That's where, that's where I was seeking.
Okay, so you're saying within the tiers, like, the first one is really the only one that the ages are different, because that's the way it was?
Well, I can see.
Yeah, I get it, I see it, okay.
And I'll, I'll say along with that, line off that, too. We started today doing individual letters for all staff to, to explain to them what tier they're going to be in. And those will be handed out at Wednesday's staff, entire staff meeting, uh, that we're holding after school. And Dean will be talking about this and, and handing out things, so...
Okay, so, but we're not approving this?
Yeah, so I gotta talk to him about what we're gonna do with that. It kind of does, yeah, a little bit, so...
It's a full no, that's good.
But I feel like we can't approve this, because there are some changes that need to be made.
Sure.
And if we're approving it, that would be the thing that would be approved, and we would need to re-approve
Sure.
a new, updated thing.
So I'll talk to him and see what he thinks tomorrow.
So I think the spirit of things is the way it should be, if I'm understanding things.
Yes.
And those, those tiers aren't gonna change?
Right.
No, no, that's, I'm wondering if, you know...
It's, it's good, though, I think, to give it out like you are, because you'll find out if perhaps there is something else not right with it.
We can't see?
Yeah, we can't see.
I think we can still go ahead with the presentation to them, and I don't think there's a problem with that, so...
I don't either, okay.
We may even have the updated version by that time with wording a little better, so... But the content's not gonna change, just kind of the verbiage, I think, so...
And I guess I would throw, as much as we all love special meetings, if there would be any interest in having a meeting to act on, this is modified before June, or...
I can talk to Dean about it and see what he, what he thinks, so... I know he wanted to get it done tonight, but he said at the very least, we can table it and talk about it, so...
Well, I don't know if it does any, if there's any benefit if the meetings are scheduled for this, starting this week, you know? Unless it was tomorrow, but I don't see this being cleaned up by tomorrow.
We're working on it tomorrow, but I don't know.
Right, but that's, yeah.
I'll call for the question to table.
Okay, so we just need a roll call on our motion?
Yes. Roll call vote, please, on the motion to table.
Aye. Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the 2016-17 high school handbook. This was provided to us at our last meeting, so I'd entertain a motion to that effect.
I move the board approve the high school handbook for the 2016-17 school year.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Roll call vote, please?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Aye. The next item on the agenda is increase to the traditional healthcare plan. And I would entertain a motion to that effect, and then we can talk about it.
I move the board approve a 6% increase to the traditional healthcare plan option.
Second.
Moved and seconded.
Anything you want to say about it?
I think we've discussed it in the past, uh, this last month, uh, that, we just talked a little earlier tonight with, uh, Donna, that, uh, it'd all go towards the traditional plan on employees' increase. And there is no increase to the district or to option one and option two. And, um, that's kind of, nothing has changed over that, so...
So if people start opting out of that traditional plan, um, the, the increase that is, that, the increase that is happening will begin to diminish, is that, because if, if you don't have as many people paying that 6% increase, then the insurance company is not getting that fee?
Correct.
Okay.
Actually, it's a savings addition, the more that do change, we're gonna, the district will save potentially money, so...
Okay.
The increase is based on use, right? Because other districts around us aren't getting this kind of an increase. This is a pretty high increase. Some are getting four, some are getting 4.9.
We didn't have any last year.
Yeah, so I, I take as, these increases are based on year use.
Yes. That's, and, you know, and claims that are out there, and, yeah. Major claims, there's a, a few things that go into it, but, yeah, we'll see.
So the, the employees be choosing between the two consumer plans? Is that what we're looking at here?
Yeah, the option one, option two.
Right.
With the HRA contribution and, um, the, obviously, I, people learn quite a bit at the healthcare meetings that we're gonna have, talking about, you know, their, I really want them to, to really understand their, you know, their, I won't say risk, their, you know, there's a gap, you know, how much you totally you could pay if some catastrophic happened. Things like that we'll be talking through. Quite frankly, option two, and option one's kind of a stopgap almost, you know? Why would you go to stop option one when option two is even that much better? When you're talking HRA and things like that, so, um, yes.
I, I was on the finance committee last year, and this is discussed pretty thoroughly with the finance committee, but I don't think it was ever really discussed with the full board in any detail. And sometime that might be helpful, when you're giving a report, so they all have an idea, too, about what it was. Rachel, you, were you on the committee, too, then? Yeah, but after that, something happened, we changed business, and it kind of got dropped.
Okay.
Lost its radar, on the radar. And the teachers didn't really fully understand. It came really at, in the end, didn't it?
Uh, it was a really quick thing that had to happen before the teachers started, it was...
And I didn't want that to happen this year, and that's why I got, you know, I, I really got on the, the Houseman Johnson to, to get back these to me as soon as possible, so...
Maybe sometime you could give a little short presentation to all the people.
Sure. And you're welcome to come and attend any of the meetings that I have, uh, out there for the, over the next week here, so...
And when do teachers have to make their, their decisions?
Oh, yeah, the open enrollment period's gonna be, gosh, mark my words here, it's gonna be the 16th through, of this month, yep. Through... I wanna see the file, it's, it's the first Friday in June.
Okay, other questions at all? Any other discussion? May we have a roll call, please?
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Donna Thomas?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Aye. The next item is changes to the handbook. There, the first seems to be fairly straightforward, changing the dates to the, the prospective date of 16-17. Uh, and the other deals with, um, moving to the option of 26 payroll periods. So, need a motion to, uh, to approve the changes to the employee handbook.
I move the board approve the following revisions to the employee handbook to begin with the 2016-17 school year. Change all of the appropriate dates from 2015-16 to 2016-17, and change Part One, Section Six, Pay Periods, Part 6.01, Annualized Payroll Cycle, to read, "All employees shall be given the choice between 22 payrolls or 26 payrolls, and both payrolls shall be placed on a bi-weekly payroll sc- cycle."
Second.
Moved and seconded. Now, we've had this discussion at previous meetings, and I think that this certainly is a welcome change for a lot of, a lot of our employees.
Agreed.
So if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Donna Thomas?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robyn Kurio? Aye. The next item deals with the dues and fees for the upcoming school year. And there appears to be only one change. So if we could have a, a motion to that effect?
I move the board approve the dues and fees for the 2016-17 school year.
Second.
And this increase is lunch prices at five cents per meal.
Lunch, breakfast, yeah.
And this is a DPI?
Yes.
This isn't just a...
It's mandated.
Yeah, they have a tool, you still approve it, but they have a tool that you have to abide by, and they show you your costs are, so...
Right.
Okay. A roll call vote, please?
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Donna Thomas?
Aye.
Aye. And we have the approval of gifts. Um, there are two gifts that have been made this month.
I move the board approve the following gifts and thank the donors for their generous donation to our school system. $200 from Doyle Dogs LLC to the Elementary Gardening Project. $500 donation from the Heritage Credit Union via Nadine Lower to the 2016 Chris Fry Memorial Scholarship.
Second.
Moved and seconded. You know, it's always wonderful that the community steps up and continues to support our, our schools and our students. Any other questions or comments? Can we have a roll call vote on the gifts?
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Donna Thomas?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Aye. You know, the one thing that I don't see on the agenda is the discussion was suggested that we were going to, um, take some action on the staffing.
Oh, yeah, that wasn't here, was it?
Um, but that, that does not appear.
We can't do it.
So we can't do it?
Nope. But we can do it the next meeting.
Uh, we're talking about the district office staff?
No.
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 The additional professional staff at the middle school.
Gotcha.
So for the June board agenda, that should be, that should be there as well as, uh, the post-retirement benefits. New compensation plan. Are there other items?
Yeah, are we ever gonna talk about the budget before we have to approve it?
Oh, no. Of course we are, yes. We can have a budget update by then.
I will.
Mr. Deeb, can, is there anything that, uh, you or Mr. Sanders have thought of that we may need?
Not beyond those, I don't think.
Great. Well then, the final item is adjournment. May I have a motion?
I move to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, thank you very much.
Thank you.